This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Mervin.
Here.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Secretary Bosman.
Here.
Director Mervin.
Here.
Senator Nathan.
Here.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org backslash Symbly. Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, or community engagement listening sessions, and hear during comments to the Board. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. People who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website and on the Symbly main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Tonight's speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Members will make sure you have copies of this after the meeting. Our next item is 4.1, Information and Outreach. Board Member Committee Updates. Does any Board Member have updates from their committee since the last meeting or any information to share? Director Mervin.
Just briefly, the youth voice and leadership is a really important initiative for this year, and the Student School Board team has met now a couple of times, looking at the model that we'll be using going forward to work with our students as we help teach them leadership skills, as we impress upon them about how important student voice is, and so that they can learn that they can really become the change makers that are going to make this place and every place they go better. So, we're excited about the opportunities. We're looking at slightly different models for this next year, but we have great kids who will be working with us and who we'll be working for, and we're excited to see the progress we make in terms of really empowering student voice.
I think I'll invite any other Board Members who were there who'd like to speak, but a number of us were at the Back to School Block Party on Saturday, and we were staffing a table, providing information about the referendum. And I don't know what the actual count was, but I know that they were planning to give out 1,000 backpacks, and probably did. But it was just a lovely community gathering to kick off the school year. Lots of kids there. We had great conversations with parents and kids. Someone from our Early Childhood Program was also there, and I know that she was able to connect with parents who hadn't yet registered their kids for preschool, so she was able to give them information and connect them to that. Human Resources was there and connected with some people who were looking for some positions, so it was just a really good opportunity to get on board with people who were starting to think about school. Anybody else who was there? Got wet? Got rain done?
Off and on.
Yeah, and just that it was raining kind of on and off, but the spirit was amazing. And with one exception, every single child we talked to, and there were hundreds of them that came to our booth, they were excited to get back to school.
And you kept count of that?
Pardon?
You kept count?
I did keep count, yes. I have names.
All right, moving on to our Consent Agenda. Items 5.1 through 5.12 are consent agenda items. Would any Board Member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Consent Agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 is a focus topic, Rethinking Funding Options Overview Part 2. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and we have John Carlson, Andy Croftstead coming up and joining us, a third member of the triumvirate that's helping to coordinate this, Denise Moody, our Director of Innovation, is away. And so, thanks to John and Andy for the leadership that they've been providing. As Board Members will recall, this discussion today is part two of laying the groundwork for an important set of recommendations that we will bring you later in the fall to modify the way we fund and staff our schools. In the previous overview, we talked about the distinction between funding strategies that are largely centralized and create a uniform, and another paradigm that has been implemented in some US school districts, often called student-based budgeting, or per-pupil formula. We are going to delve a bit more deeply tonight into that paradigm of student-based budgeting because we focused on our current state more heavily last time. But then, equally importantly, we are going to also lay the groundwork tonight for a discussion of how we budget our central office functions, because that is a component of this funding redesign called for in our strategic plan that is also critical to achieving the other aspects of our strategic plan. And so, we want to lay the groundwork tonight with some of the issues that we need to think through and that we will be bringing you recommendations on regarding how we fund, for instance, our Office of Academics or our Office of Equity and Engagement, and the functions that those offices perform, in addition to digging a bit more deeply into how we fund and staff our schools. So, John and Andy, thank you, and take it away.
Very good. Thank you, Superintendent Pecal and Chair Nathan, School Board Members. It's our pleasure here to give you a second installment of a six-part series. So, just a refresher, Strategic Plan called for back when we came up with the words "modify funding formulas," we've relabeled that as Rethinking Funding, and it's the core work of figuring out how we allocate the resources that we do have to fund our schools and our central office departments. The seven characteristics that you voted to approve when we started this journey was to come back with a funding policy that would be effective, efficient, equitable, coherent, predictable, transparent, and responsive. And we've certainly kept all of these in mind as we've done a lot of conversations with our Community Budget Advisory Group, as well as some feedback sessions with staff. Just a quick refresher, there's kind of a continuum here of styles of budgeting. You can have a highly guaranteed budgeting system, or you can have a highly autonomous budgeting system, or, in the school district world, a student-based budgeting system, where a lot of the autonomy and a lot of the decisions are made at the school level by either the school leader or the school leader with their staff. RPS is not all the way over till a fully centralized decision-making system. We are just a little bit to the left of that on the continuum. And we covered these last time. I'll just quickly run through them, but a student-based budgeting system is going to allocate dollars more than full-time equivalents. It's going to use enrollment projections as the basis for funding. We are going to come up with, or if we were to do this, we would come up with an objective and measurable student characteristics that could weight our formula. It can be a less predictable option if schools have declining enrollment. We'll talk about that in a moment, a little deeper. It utilizes a formula to calculate the funding for each school. Again, it makes our principals become our primary decision-makers with some input from their teams. Central Office will manage all the calculations, weights, and total dollars that are allocated, very similar to how we do it today. And it can be seen as more equitable and responsive to fund our students based on the needs and the characteristics, but it really can be dependent, or should be dependent, on our policy that we write down before we roll out the dollars. And then, again, the transparency will depend on the actual budget process. So, we just wanted to go a little bit deeper. We wanted to share a few more of the potential benefits of a student-based budgeting system that we've unraveled as we've been having a lot of learning time around this subject. On the next slide, I'll share some of the potential issues that we've noticed. So, again, it empowers our principals to address the unique challenges within their buildings. So, principals, rather than saying, "You must have this, and you must have that, and you must have this," and feeling like maybe there's not a lot of flexibility, the principals would say, or we would give the principals a certain amount of money, and they would come up with a staffing pattern that solves the issues or puts the staff in the positions that they think will best deal with the challenges in their building. It will or could encourage our schools to improve their programming and outcomes so more students enroll, and their funding increases. We removed a barrier, if you remember, during Attendance Option redesign and made all of our schools basically, minus the high schools, self-transport schools, meaning you can apply, if we have space available, to bring your student to any school within our district. And that's been a very successful process so far. Jackie and I will talk to you about that in a minute. But this would encourage competition because you would want students to come to your building because every student that comes to your building would bring more funding with them. Targeted funding, so we would have to come up with the formulas and figure out how to weight different student characteristics that are measurable, but common ones would be students living at poverty might be weighted more than students not living in poverty. Students needing multilingual learning services could be weighted higher than students who English is their first language, and students with special education is another common way to weight the funding formula. And then, the thought being that that gives the principal more money to deal with characteristics within their students that would need more support. And then, it increases the participation in the annual budgeting process. Again, we have a very highly centralized system right now where our principals, by and large, know exactly what they're getting before they even sit down and go through their budgeting process. This would put a lot of autonomy back to the buildings, back to our principals, to work with their staff to come up with the plan for their building. I wanted to just go and do some of the challenges that we've also been talking about as we've been working through this. One challenge that comes up, it's related to something I said on the previous one, but it might be difficult to find the best student-based budgeting formula out there. We know that we need to do more thinking and more discussions about how to come up with the best formula for Rochester Public Schools, given the constraints and the amount of resources that we will have when we roll this out. It could increase workload on our central office staff in our finance department if there are a lot of different budgeting, unique budgeting ideas out there in our school buildings. Our principals are very creative and very educated and have great ideas. That could be taxing on us as we try to sort that out and try to figure out the best way to code all the staff with the systems that were required to report back to Minnesota Department of Education. It could, as I was saying earlier, it could increase funding for a school if they get increased enrollment, but it also could create competition amongst our schools that we haven't necessarily seen before, which could also lead to undermining some of our collaboration and our efforts to actually work as a system pointed in the same direction. It could lead to different programming at schools. We could get different ideas out there, and, for example, somebody could come up with, "We want this to be, our focus to be arts and music," and that could come at the expense of some other subject area, and that could start to craft some of our buildings looking slightly different from other buildings. In our smaller schools, something that could happen, if we don't provide maybe a small school subsidy, and if we're just rolling out dollars based on the literal number of kids in the building, they may not be able to adhere to the district's class-sized targets in the same way. There is a size to a school that, if there isn't a certain amount of funding, it can't fully cover the base operations like the principal and the office and the maintenance staff, so on and so forth. So, right now, in a highly centralized system where we roll out those resources, no matter what the size of the building is, that could become a challenge to fully staff the way we're used to. It might be difficult to provide extra supports in some of our schools, so if, how we come up with our formula and how we weight our students and how we divvy up the dollars that are available, some of our schools have been used to having certain supports in the highly centralized environment that we operate, might not be able to afford to pay for those services based with the dollars that they are given based on the characteristics of their students. When we get to budget reductions, a lot of the pressure is likely going to, and if this were to happen, not saying that this is going to happen because with the referendum in play, we are hoping that we attain funding for the next 10 years, but if there were a need to have some sort of budget reduction, say labor costs were going up much faster than funding in the future, it would push the, or put the pressure on the school principal to make those decisions versus getting a manual from the central office that says, "This is exactly how you're going to make budget reductions in your building." And it could create an incentive for the principal to favor lower-cost staff with less experience to gain more staffing numbers, and that would only be concerned if we decided to allocate or charge to our principals the actual cost of the staff. We haven't made that decision yet, and I think we talked about last time, we are bound by union contracts, so we would follow all those and we would honor those as they are written today. But it could cause some interesting situations there where certain leaders might want to staff it differently depending on the actual cost of staff, again, if we charge them the actual cost of the staff or in their building.
Good. If I might, Madam Chair, let me just make really clear. What John just walked us through is not a recommendation for RPS. It's an overview of one approach to budgeting that we are learning from and thinking about a lot. As you could tell, there are some benefits to it, but there are some issues, and we're grappling with it really carefully. What we're about to turn to now with the central office is kind of pivoting to what is really happening in RPS. So, I know we're, this is part of a multi-meeting dialogue that we know is going to be sustained over a number of months, but I want to be really clear, both for Board Members and for anybody watching, that the paradigm John just walked us through is something we are learning from and thinking about, but not necessarily will be the substance of a recommendation to you in the fall.
Thank you very much for pointing that out.
But you said it, but I just want to be really clear about it because it's a very different reality from the one that we're in, and I just want to be super clear that this is a, this is part of a learning process that will result in a recommendation to this Board before the end of the calendar year, but we're still in that learning phase.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, then, as we shift to central office budgeting, we've focused a lot of our time, a lot of our meetings so far, a lot of our learning has been on how do we allocate the money appropriately and the best way to our school sites. The other reality we need to deal with, something that's long overdue in the way we budget Rochester Public Schools, is the funding of our central office departments and the functions that we provide. I'm the supervisor over the technology, the facilities, the transportation, and we're provided budgets that include funds for the staffing, the contracted services, or the purchased services, and our supply budgets. What we haven't done for a long time is really looked at that system in depth and made sure, are these appropriate budgets? Are they, are they too much? Probably not too much, but are they too little? And then, what functions do we say go to the school building, and what functions actually go to the central office budgeting system? And so, there's a lot of conversations and a lot of things that need to happen before we can get to a recommendation on that, but we just, we wanted to name this as an issue that we're also grappling with at the same time. Here is a list, a bolded list, that we came up with very quickly of some of the things that we don't have sustained budget allocations currently within our current budget models. For example, we recently bought a large dollar amount of curriculum for reading, and that came because we had money from federal COVID funding that we could target towards that, as well as money specifically named to us in the Read Act. What we don't have, though, is that same kind of robust budgeting to do a regular, rigorous review of all of our curriculums, like science and math, and on and on. And so, the challenge there, or that, you know, that's, it's the thing we need to solve is, if we're going to properly resource those things, what are we not going to resource down at the school level? And so, that's where some of the tough work is ahead of us in trying to figure what's the right amount, and where does that money come from? Just some other things on there. Family engagement process, we don't have a robust budget for that. We've added a couple software products that you've heard a lot about in some of your presentations by my colleagues recently, Zello and Fastbridge as examples. We funded those with COVID funding. They're perfectly legitimate uses, but we need to likely find an ongoing, continuous funding source for them. Recruitment of new staff. Upgrade to our playgrounds is a common one that comes up in my world, being, having oversight of finance and facilities. There are a lot of aging school playgrounds out there that need some upgrading, and we would like to find a dedicated funding source to be able to do that. But again, it's going to come at the cost of something else in the system. Employee support and wellbeing. Purchases for staff technology and devices. We've said this over and over. I hear it when Superintendent explains referendum, but we, we do. We pass on student devices that are generally three years old to our staff unless that building or that department can find it within their budget to buy their staff new technology devices. So, we give our, our staff hand-me-down devices. And then, translation of materials into languages other than English, and there's a whole list like this that we could go on. Couple big issues that we also need to address as we come to thinking about maybe going back to the school budgeting. Staff development. Should that be managed and budgeted at the centralized central office level, or should that be rolled out more to our school sites? Right now, it's a hybrid where there's some money that's reserved and rolled out, and the teachers at that building actually plan and decide how to spend that money, but a good chunk of the staff development funding is still managed and budgeted here at the central office level. Another, and this really comes down to allocating the appropriate amount of funds for our high schools, but currently, we don't do a deduct, or we don't subtract money out of the high school budget formula for students that are leaving the high school building to go to PSEO classes, CTEC classes, or PTEC classes. And so, we know that that's an issue that we need to make an adjustment for and figure out how we're going to do that and how we're going to come with. I think that gets me to the end of the prepared remarks. Again, none of what you have heard tonight is an absolute recommendation. We're catching you up on the learning and the conversations we've had, so now, as we spend the next couple months, we will be sharpening our focus on some of these issues we've named so that Superintendent can come back and give you the recommendation.
Board Members, any questions, observations, comments? Director McLaughlin.
Mr. Carlson, this might be a question for you or for Superintendent Pecal, and I've been kind of thinking about this for a while and also sit on the Community Budget Advisory Committee, so I've kind of been thinking through that concept. Do you have enough information at this point to answer a question about how drastically this impacts the work of a principal on a day-to-day basis? That it seems like their jobs would be quite different, at least for periods of time during the year? Do you have enough information to be able to speak to that?
It's a fantastic question, so thank you, Director McLaughlin, for it. I lived through a version of this in St. Paul Public Schools during the years that I worked there, and we got it to the point where principals controlled about 51% of their budget. They didn't want all of that budget. Special education, they didn't want to have multilingual learning, what we called PL, they didn't want, but we got it to about 51%.
They wanted those things. They didn't want the budget.
They wanted, right. They wanted, thank you. They wanted the services, they wanted the kids, they didn't want the budgets, they didn't want the authority. And it was a six-year process of actually both expanding their authority but building their capacity as well. And it was a tension because, A, it was being pulled by, against other things, but they also actually had to learn to allocate resources in a way that, right now, is not on their to-do list. They needed to think about those staffing ratios, and so, it is a significant increase. We also had a structure, which I believe I would also recommend here in Rochester, where the principal was not just the enlightened dictator and could control, so you replace us with the principal. There was a school improvement team, and the co-chairs, one of which had to be a teacher, their signature was required on the plan and the budget to move it forward. So, the principal had authority, but they had to have some consensus building, and we worked very hard to have those become teams that represented perspectives of the school. But, but the principal was key, and ultimately, that was a critical decision-maker, and it was a drag on the time and other things. That said, it was tremendously empowering for those principals as well, because St. Paul, like Rochester, was an incredibly diverse school district at the time, and principals went from needing to accept the allocations they were given by the district to not complete at all, but increased flexibility for designing programming and things. And just one example that will always stick in my mind, there was one elementary school where the principal went to a conference, it was in an urban area of almost all low-income kids, and he went to a conference and discovered a program that NASA was creating. kids, and he went to a conference and discovered a program that NASA was creating to prepare elementary kids, to educate them around the theme of space. And he came back and he said, and he introduced it to his school community, and he said, "We want to become a space school, aerospace." And everybody said, "What in the world is this school on the east side of St. Paul going to do with theirs?" They built the consensus and then they had the authority to build the programming and the classes. And it was really quite an extraordinary period. And that, to me, was the most, like, visible example of a school taking the kind of autonomy. There was still approval of that process to be sure they were going to meet the curricular requirements and things. But I remember when the principal, who was one of those, Troy Vincent, for anybody out there who's, he's now retired, but he was one of those sort of big personalities. And when he got passionate about something, you heard about it a lot. And I remember when this Farnsworth Elementary becomes, Farnsworth Aerospace came up, people kind of laughed. And then three years later, they were winning awards. But they had the flexibility to, they had to change their schedule, their staffing model, and all those kinds of things. And there were other schools that made smaller changes. That was particularly vivid because it became a school-wide focus. And boy, he lived it for those years. I mean, it was a passion in that case. So, thank you. An important question, that you don't want to decentralize authority ahead of capacity because then you just get more bad decisions being made in more places. Like, we want to actually, not that we have bad decisions being made now, but you want to make sure that you're, you're building that capacity to think in terms of resources.
Thank you. Director Workman?
Yeah, I, I had some similar thoughts along that line as well, but, and once again, perhaps this is outside of your wheelhouse right now because you're just in the early stages. But when you talk about competing for schools, are we talking about competition among schools or competition to bring school, you know, students into the district? And I could see some problems with that, but one would, might be the reallocation of how we do our attendance boundaries. Is every school going to be a choice school? And then what do we do about the neighborhood kids? Do they get, you know, how, how would that work in? And I know this is, I'm really getting ahead of the, ahead of my skis here, but I think it's something to keep in mind as you move forward with this.
I would say it's a both and. I'm looking for our schools to be attractive to our families within our district and as part of our enrollment strategy, just like other districts want our students to open and enroll into their district. I would love to see students wanting to choose Rochester Public Schools from outside our boundaries as well.
You know, I mean, when I talk about competition, then it's toward sort of the well-being of, you know, what's happening at that school and just to not have the idea that some people do that we have good schools in Rochester and we have bad schools in Rochester, that, I mean, there has to be some kind of guard rail around that.
Again, I think with some of the decisions we made last year in becoming a self-transport as an option to any school, so long as you can get your child there, we put up a new lottery system, and I've seen applications come in for all of our schools. So all of our schools are sought after by people. Obviously, there are some that, like a Lincoln, that only has the option of, you know, you need to go through the self-transport application process because they don't have a boundary. But I've seen people wanting to get into all of our schools, and I'm sure there's a whole variety of reasons behind that.
So, Dr. Marvin?
Yes, thank you. And perhaps your last statement is an opening to my initial statement, and that is, for those families who are able to provide self-transport, then they're fully able to potentially take advantage of the new offerings that are available across town, so to speak. Is there, for the viewing public, what's the driving need to even engage, if you will, in this particular, and I want to make sure I get the name correct, rethinking funding, okay, at this particular point in time?
I would, I would say that focuses on a couple main areas. One, we want to make sure that we have the proper allocations to our school buildings so that they're getting the resources they need to run a school building and school programming. But just as much, we need to figure out the central office budgets and, and the funding for them as well. At times, it might seem like we should cut our budget primarily at the central office level, but when we do that, we sometimes forget that at the central office level, we also are staffing services that are being provided and pushed into our schools. Like, our special education services, I'd say, are centrally budgeted and centrally managed, but they're in the schools and they're providing services to the kids. So we do need to address both sides of the issue.
And then finally, where we are, or, and this is just step two of a six-step process, the fact that we have a, we'll be voting on a referendum, the Saul, is there any direct correlation, again, for those who may be wondering or considering the timing, is there any direct correlation between the two, or are they separate, or?
I think, Superintendent, would you want to manage that question?
Thank you, Director Barlow. It's a very, very, very timely question. I find it hard to imagine bringing you a recommendation for extensive change if we are also faced with cutting $19.4 million for the next year following the failure of a referendum. I think that to Director McLaughlin's point about our capacity of our leaders, that would be too much to ask. We're going to cut $19.4 million per year and we're going to change our budget and staffing model. I think we would have to defer this change to subsequent years because simply cutting that level of funding, as we will also be talking about in coming meetings in a humane and smart way, would more than absorb our time here and at the school level. I would not say that should take it off the table in perpetuity. I think we still need to think this through. I think your question, and I saw Director Croxton wanted to jump in, so I'm just going to give him a chance a minute. When you say, "Why do this?", I regularly have principals and teachers and counselors bring innovative ideas to me and say, "This would be great, it's good for kids, we need you to give us more money to do it." And we don't have that, more money to do it. And so I think part of the core question is how do we get a funding system where they have resources that enable them to allocate to priorities? Because right now in our system, they come down and ask for additional funding here. And when we don't have that funding, the answer is too often no. And it's not the answer we often want to give. I don't know, Andy, if you wanted to go back to-
I was going to, I was going to say, I was also going to just mention, you know, it is the basis, it's the, it's one of the base building blocks of the strategic plan. And in order to work the strategic plan and deliver on the expected outcomes of the strategic plan, we need to make sure that the funding is in place and strategically, to use that word, in place, to support everything in that plan. And I think it's fair to say right now, things aren't quite lined up necessarily in the way that we'll deliver on all of those outcomes in that strategic plan, and this is, this is moving in that direction.
And then finally, if I may share, no one should interpret this as, if you will, a fear-mongering attempt on the part of the district to try to get, go the taxpayers into, I appreciate the fact that you have provided examples of unfunded, if you will, mandates. So important for that to be heard and understood and, and realized. There just are some things we will be unable to do with our current funding. And ultimately, even if, I shouldn't say even if, when the referendum passes, there still will be a need for this reset, if you will. And, and so I'm, I'm glad to hear and realize that, you know, this is true regardless of, but the dynamics of, will potentially change either way with the approval or disapproval. Thank you.
Director Marvin?
To me, this is a little bit of a horse in the cart kind of thing. I think it's really smart to be looking at how we're funding things. I think, you know, we, we could keep doing things the way we've been doing them, but I think questioning periodically is, is important and exploring different ideas. I guess my, my concern right now is that how buildings will prioritize what they think is important for their kids. So for instance, I think you gave the example that if one school thinks music is really important for this group of kids in this community, what gets lost then at that school? That kids, and certain kids attending that school then won't have the opportunity to have the same experiences as kids at another school. I mean, we already have buildings. We only have one building that's K8. We only have one building with the planetarium. But it seems, I mean, this could evolve into like a magnet school system where each school has a specialty and people get to choose. And that's been used in different districts at different times. But I, I guess that's my concern and my question as we go forward about what kind of a district do we want to be? What kind of offerings do we want to provide? And what kinds of, how careful do we want to be that most kids can get most experiences at their school wherever that one is?
Director Garcia?
I appreciate also that you're bringing this to us. I think this is incredible, and I love the graphs because it helps somebody who's not a finance person understand what we're looking at. And I also appreciate, Dr. Pecal, you mentioning that, you know, the management of like the resources and the capacity to do this will come before, you know, a decision would have to be made because in a time like this, my, my initial gut reaction was to protect the principals because we're looking at such a significant deficit, but I wouldn't want them to have to have that responsibility, at least not in the chaos of kind of what we're looking at right now. And I recognize that staff know their neighborhoods and they know their kids, and so they would know what is supposed to be happening or what should be happening or could benefit their neighborhood best. And so I would love the idea of giving them that respect and some of that autonomy or maybe doing a little bit of a shared thing, like we take the brunt of the responsibility for difficult decisions, but when we do have the ability and the authority to allow that to be shared amongst schools, I think that would be phenomenal. Because we just heard from one of our speakers that to have more predictability across schools would likely make their family feel more comfortable, whereas some families and schools would like the idea of the magnet, like, yes, I would love to go to the aerospace school or I would love to go to the fine arts school. And so I think after hearing all of the discussion now, I, I feel a little bit more balanced and knowing all of this offers like a different set of promise than I had expected before because you sort of just assume like this is how our budget works, therefore it will always be that way. But it's, I suppose, based on this, it doesn't necessarily have to be, and there are ways that we could potentially be creative because we are an incredibly unique district. So I appreciate you both bringing this forward, and I can see, I still feel the protectiveness of principals in, in times like this and recognize that, like, down the line when we have happy, happy budget talks to be leaning into, that maybe starting to build that capacity would make a little bit of sense. And it, if we're really doing, you know, this like culturally responsive education, allowing schools to make those decisions, which they know would positively affect the neighborhoods where their schools are, I think would be an excellent opportunity.
Director Workman?
Yeah, I think I'd be really interested, not today, because this is way in the future of delving into the idea of magnet schools, which Director Marvin has just mentioned an issue with music and Director Garcia did the same, is that from my experience teaching high school, is that a lot of my, a large percentage of my students were also interested and wanted to do the NASA space program or whatever. You know, they were taking all of the really tough AP classes. So once you pull those things apart, I think it not only makes it difficult for students and parents to figure out which way they're going, but also eliminates the opportunity for a student to have that well-rounded education that I think is really important. So, like I said, I know I'm into the weeds and, you know, probably five years ahead of myself here, but I just thought I'd throw it out.
And I, I hear the conversation about the specialization or concentration or certain focuses of the school, but I think, as I, as I think about where this is going to go, I see embedded in this a responsibility to adhere to a core set of standards and offerings that will allow all of our students to get the education that they need to fulfill our mission statement. But I've also seen in a number of our schools, both neighborhood and district-wide options, they've chosen to deliver that core differently. So I don't see that, you know, you're not going to not learn how to read at any of our schools, you're not going to not learn science. But you might have a more outdoors-based science program at one school if they're able to structure it this way, and you might have a more engineering-based one at another school, similar to that, the NASA program. But if we don't give our principals and our educators the option to innovate, things are changing faster than the state is changing standards and curriculum instruction opportunities are changing faster than they're changing our textbooks and that they're changing the curriculum that, that they buy. I mean, we're on a, what, buying new curriculum every, how many years? 10 years when the standards change?
Most need 10.
So-
But we don't, it's not funded.
Right. But to, to have to wait even 10 years before you innovate curriculum, and it takes money to innovate curriculum. So I, I'm excited to hear about how we'll do both, how we will, how we will ensure and communicate to everyone the expectations for the high-quality education for our students, but give our educators that flexibility to innovate, not only as the curriculum changes, as our kids change. Because I think our kids are changing way faster than, you know, on a 10-year period. So thanks for that.
If I might brief you, Madam Chair, to Director Barlow's point earlier about the connection between this and the referendum, and Dr. Garcia mentioned it too. Of course, the referendum is the 5th of November. We will be bringing you a proposal on the 19th, intentionally a couple of weeks after, so we will calibrate based on what we find out. That will be a regular board meeting where I'll give an overview of the proposal. Then in the, the 3rd of December, we will, you will hear it in a prep-for-action format, the beginning of a process. The 10th of December, you will have a study session to dig in deep. And then should you so choose, you would vote on a proposal by the 17th of December. And the logic of the timeline is, as board members know well, we start our budgeting process in the very beginning of the new calendar year. And so should you choose to move in one of these directions for the '25, '26 school year, we would need your decision before I had the end of the calendar year. And so that timeline is not far away. And thank you again very much for laying the groundwork.
Thank you, thank you. Our next item is a monitoring item, Summer of Discovery 2024. Superintendent Pecal?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'm going to invite our Executive Director of Community Partnerships and Education, Amy Icke, to come up. Amy is going to choose to drive our ship from the podium up there, and we can still, of course, engage her in conversation. I want to thank Amy and everybody on the team that has done an amazing job in the three years that I've been here in managing what we have come to call Summer Discovery. And let's just say this is not your grandfather or grandmother's summer school. So Amy, here we go.
Thank you. The reason I'm standing here is to keep moving because we know this is monitoring, and I could talk forever about summer. So, thank you, Board, for hearing a monitoring report on Summer of Discovery. You'll notice in the small print at the bottom that I have this marked as our final year. And I don't say that as an absolute, but as a final year of funding, and we'll talk a little bit about that. By the way, this picture happens to have some Mayo Clinic folks in it that came to work with our Summer of Discovery students at John Adams. And what they're using there is an ultrasound machine to find the buried items under the, the jelly that they brought with them. So, Summer of Discovery is truly about experiences and then tying the academic knowledge to those experiences. So very quickly, we had very similar enrollment this year to our last- So very quickly, we had very similar enrollment this year to our last couple of years at the elementary. A little bit different arrangement of sites due to construction projects that were going on. At the middle and high school, we did see fewer Kellogg students. And I think you noticed that when a building is not available due to construction. And so that's kind of a natural lower number this year. They combined over at John Adams. And so we had some Kellogg students there, but not quite as many as last year. And then our high school is down slightly from previous years. We did make one major change this year to the schedule, and that was moving all of the credit recovery into June and having a morning and afternoon session. I don't know if that was a direct causation of the lower registration, but it's just down slightly, not a lot. I will go quickly through these next few slides. You've seen these before. These are the background goals of Summer of Discovery that were established by the task force originally that said, if we want to do summer learning correctly, what does it need to look like? And then the second step of their work was to say, okay, if we want it to look like that, what do we need to change? What are the shifts in practice? And again, you've seen these before, but just to kind of set those in your mind. So this year, as I said, we're coming to a transition for a number of reasons. One is the end of the federal COVID funding that was earmarked for summer. So there were all different sources of COVID funding, but this one was specifically on summer. We did actually get a fourth summer out of that money. We were thinking it would last us three. It lasted us four, so that's a plus. But that is done this September, and so we have concluded use of those dollars. We've expended them all, so we didn't leave any on the table, and we've used them with our students. This is also a time then that I'll be working with my new friend, Mona Perkins, on what does summer look like going forward? So we'll tie this back to the Office of Academics so that our strategic work in reading, math, and other academic areas has a really close tie with summer efforts. And then the idea of the model we'll have to think about as we are going into a different financial picture, what pieces of the model can we keep? And where do we need to reduce? So as always, as a staff-led program, we turned to our staff who were working in the program, teachers and others, and said, help us reflect in this moment in time at the turning point that we face. So we've asked them how they would describe the value to students, the value to staff, and where we could make shifts in our practice and adjustments we could make to the model. So what you see in the slides, and you had these ahead, so I won't read all these to you. But we had many, many comments that were summarized into these eight points. I will admit at the lower right-hand corner that we did use ChatGPT to help us summarize. Before I did, however, I read every comment, and I was pretty impressed with how it did the summary. And so I feel like these are an accurate presentation of those. But you can see the many things the staff felt were positive for our students. And then we've always felt along the way that Summer of Discovery was also a positive for the staff involved. They told us, they rediscovered their passion for education through some of their experiences, the autonomy to create the learning environment, the small classes, all of that. So we asked them about that. And then finally, we asked them another question I'll get to in just a moment. As we're facing this transition, I wanted to dig a little deeper into one area, and that is this financial picture. And I know that as a supportive board, you always ask, what can you do for us? So I'm anticipating that question and letting you know that there is a structural issue in Minnesota funding specifically in extended-time revenue, which includes after-school and summer. At the same time, we have the end of these COVID dollars and I would say the normal inflationary increases in salaries and things like that that you're seeing. So I'm calling that a perfect storm. It might be a little too over the top, but I like that term. So we've got the blend of COVID funds expiring. We have a Minnesota statute that establishes funding for extended day that really hasn't kept up over time. So I'm going to show you three things. One is the statute itself. So this is 126(c)10 or 10. This is the same statute that has both the general education formula base, which is how we fund our general fund. And then it also has a paragraph on extended-time revenue. So you see those two numbers circled in red. The general school day formula is the 7,000 number, and the extended-day base is the 5,000. This is a historical picture of those numbers. So what you see down the left are the years. You'll see back in 2005, those numbers were identical. Forty-five oh one, nope, forty-six oh one and forty-six oh one, identical numbers in the two parts of the statute. Not since then have they matched. And if you look down the third column, which is the extended-time revenue, not since 2015 has the base for extended time changed. So as the formula base increases, although not totally keeping up with inflation, does keep up better than the extended-time revenue base. The extended-time revenue is intended to fund point-two extra time. So if we say one average daily member or ADM is a school day, after-school is supposed to fund point-two more, so 20% more. However, right now, it's funding point-one-four. So it's not keeping up with where summer funding needs to go. And right now, there's a 30% difference there if we look at the gen ed base versus the extended-time base. So in the bullets here, I've kind of tried to summarize. So the last time it's adjusted, or last time they matched was 2005. Last time it was adjusted, 2015. So 10 years ago, we're staying at that same level. And I would say since 2005, any guesses on how much total inflation?
I can figure it out.
We've had? I happened to Google it this afternoon, 61%. So what cost you $20 in 2005 would cost you $32.20 today. Or a salary that cost you $50,000 back then would cost you $80,500. So just to give you an idea, how much the expenses have changed since that time when they were last equal. So today, you see the graph on the right. The blue line is our general ed base. And you've seen a similar graph to this, except it's the inflation graph. So the inflation line would actually be even higher than this blue line here that's actual for our general ed formula. The orange line is where the after-school or extended-time formula, summer formula is. So it's been flat for many, many, many years. So I would say if there's anything that we could do about this, this would be an area to look at. And I know the Board has a legislative planning conversation. And so I'm just dropping that little tip in there for you. So what can we do? We asked our staff, again, what were the most impactful pieces of the model? Overwhelmingly, 96.1% said the smaller classes were the most impactful thing. So we set about a 15-to-1 ratio for summer. That matches the RAND study on what works in summer learning. And small class sizes for relationship building, more differentiation of instruction, and then that ability for kids to be in an identity-affirming environment. 82.4% told us the community partnerships and expanded experiences were the second highest of the model components. And finally, 3/4 said the investment in design and prep time for teachers was critical to the model. You see down below what some of the other parts of the model were. Those were those shifts of practice that we offered. So we asked the staff, okay, if you have to make some hard choices, what are your suggestions? So the orange is their suggested ideas, partner with those organizations who can maybe provide free experiences. We do see on the challenge side that businesses and organizations have to cover their costs too. So we don't often find totally free experiences. But there's an option that we can go for, eliminating our intern, our paid intern positions at the high school level. Of course, many of our high schoolers do need to work over the summer, either to help with family expenses or to save funds. Consolidating multiple sites into fewer, this is definitely an idea that we can follow up on. One on the other side of that, of course, is you may see a reduction in interest if it's not in my building, right, as a teacher and a student. Eliminating some of the support positions and the site director positions, likely we'll have to do that. What we don't want to do is go back to the old model where people weren't excited to come. Kids weren't excited, staff weren't excited. So we want to try and keep what we can. And of course, increasing class sizes is an option as well. So those hard choices are in front of us, and we'll be working together closely on that behind the scenes with our staff. And so what's next? Office of Academics will be taking over summer learning going forward. I'll be helping in the transition. We've talked about that. We will continue to seek substantial funding so that we don't have to cut so deeply. And so anyone listening out there who happens to have some money available for summer learning, we'd love to talk with you. We'll be working with the leadership from the last four years to really continue that thinking. This was truly a teacher-led initiative, and we don't want to lose that. And then working with our fellow Minnesota school districts that are all part of the Wallace Foundation District Summer Learning Network. We are talking about this funding challenge through the formula to see if we can make some headway on that. So I just want to thank you. You've been very supportive of Summer of Discovery for these last four years. It's been a joy, and we'll see what we can do to maintain as much of it as we can.
Thank you, Amy. Director Orkman.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is it would be really helpful if the pandemic funding, call it by a different name, could be sustained.
Yes.
And another example I'd like to give, I think, of funding that would help certainly in after-school programs as well as generally, is the funding that was provided, that provided a 40% reduction in child poverty. You know, so all of those things have really, I think, have borne out some really important things, just support some really important things. And then everybody loves it, and then the funding goes away. But you're still kind of, well, why aren't you doing this anymore?
Right. The needs don't go away, right?
Well, I can say, Director Marvin and I were fortunate enough to attend the Olympics, the end of Summer of Discovery Olympics at Elton Hills. And not only did we see the students, we saw the parents there, but we also had a chance to talk to some of the staff. And they expressed a lot of this feedback. Their energy on a hot summer day in the middle of summer was, I think, really inspiring. And it's interesting, we're doing this presentation right after we did the rethinking funding because it's that kind of creativity and innovation that they were able to do through Summer of Discovery that we were just talking about, that, you know, different funding might allow. So thank you for all you and your team have done because in person, you can see the results of what's happened with these kids.
Director McLaughlin.
Thank you for putting this on the Legislative Committee radar. I didn't see that in your final point on your last slide, that that was probably speaking to that point, that it is a statewide issue. And that I think the Legislative, I like your idea that the Legislative Committee is probably a good place to take a look at this.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next monitoring topic is Back to School 2024-25. It's here. Superintendent McHell.
It's here. I would like to ask Jackie Peterson, our Chief of Schools, and John Carlson, our Chief Administrative Officer, to come up and give you an overview of the preparations for the new school year that we are about to start next week. So, John and Jackie.
We've got Carl coming.
Oh, and Carl. Wow. You added.
We should be standing up too because this is also a focus topic, but we'll be quick. Back to School 2024. It happens before you know it. I know we're all very excited to be back. We've had some great energy in our buildings today that we'll talk about. Today, actually, was the first day staff was back in building, in their buildings. Yesterday was a flexible day. We did have teachers working, but they had the ability to work off-site if they needed to. So our buildings were partially full of staff and a lot of energy. Today, we had great welcome-back activities across the district. I had the opportunity to stop, I kind of covered the southeast quadrant this morning, focusing on buildings that have had changes, like Riverside where there's two staff, two staffs coming together. You remember with Spanish immersion. And then I was at Longfellow this morning as well, as Pinewood has joined that staff. At Riverside, they were doing a really fun activity in the cafeteria while I was there. The staff had all provided a fun factor, a strange fact about themselves. And the administrators had put together a PowerPoint, and in teams, they had to guess who this person was, who's deathly afraid of taxidermy, for example. And they had five choices for each one. The five people that were named in that as choices were required to stand. So it was a great opportunity for the Riverside staff to get to know the names of the people that were standing as possible choices. There were a lot of fun things going on. I found out that we have a teacher there who's also an attorney or is a licensed attorney. There were a lot of really interesting things that came from that, but mostly super fun, super engaging. And it's clear that that staff is ready to work together. Longfellow, the Longfellow teachers provided a trail mix bar for the Pinewood staff, and they had some sort of a sign. I think it said something like, we're excited to be on this trail with you. So nice to see these welcoming activities happening where we have staffs coming together. Today, there were also staff meetings and kind of business, taking care of business. And then in the afternoon, the buildings were sharing information from what they learned at Leadership last week about the referendum and other topics that we wanted them, principals, to share. Tomorrow looks a lot like today in terms of format. I should say yesterday, or today and tomorrow, ESPs are included in the training and opportunities to be together in the building. And Thursday will then just be licensed staff. Friday is a non-duty day for all licensed staff and ESPs. But I would imagine our buildings will still be buzzing with work and preparation.
I wanted to give you a brief update on enrollment. So as we were preparing this for you about eight days ago, we pulled our current enrollment. It's sitting at 17,369 and probably has ticked up a little bit since then. One year ago, we just wanted to pull up, where were we one year ago, as close as we could be? We were at 17,503 registered at that point. This is a small decline of 134 students, but it actually is better than what we had budgeted and predicted, which you remember from budgeting season was a decline of 271. So we're feeling optimistic that we will meet or exceed our enrollment goal or target for the year and be on track for budget. I didn't put this in here, but I just have a data point on the self-transport. I was looking over there. A few moments ago, we've had 663 students accept a position at a school that is not their attendance area school. We have seven families right now that have a text or an email to them that they need to respond to by a deadline to accept an offer. And then we have 53 students still on waiting lists. We've really worked that down over the summer. And I guess I would encourage if anyone is paying attention, we will continue to process those as we go. So there is still opportunity if a family needs to make a last-minute decision that's best for their child.
This is a late-breaking slide about school-age childcare. As our colleague Amy Icke shared with us at Cabinet yesterday, that they have passed the goal of an additional 25% or 300 spots for school-age childcare. and they have not stopped working to to add additional spots. We're really excited about the fact that a lot of our high school students are working in the SAC program. And then our high schools have made that possible through scheduling, and some kids are earning credit for that work.
This is also a late add to the slide deck. We wanted to provide you with an update on staffing and our vacancies. If you look at that slide, we are, and this is a snapshot in time. This was late last week, early this week. It has changed since then. I know there's been a busy push for hiring with principals and other hiring managers. So as of late last week slash early this week, we had 34 openings for FTEs for ESPs. That's actually lower than the last couple of years. We've we've been running in the 70s and 80s during the summer as far as vacancies. So that that's a trend in the right direction. Maintenance, that, very surprised by that, that's a very low number.
One.
One. One hasn't been running on that report. No, we could have had some resignations since then, and so I won't.
Or we could have hired one.
It's very possible.
That's glass-half-full approach.
Yes, we're working on that.
We've had one day of full employment in maintenance, one day in the last, like, four or five years. So we're hoping to, we're almost there, and I think.
And if anyone's watching.
Another day, and you could double it.
We could double our revenue.
Food service, seven, again, that's lower than we we probably would see this time of year. It's encouraging, and I know we had a hiring event a couple of weeks ago, and there probably were 15 people that cherry-interviewed that day alone. Our general ed teachers were at 12.8 FTE. And a lot of those are partial FTEs that will be picked up as overloads, a lot of .1, .2s that will be picked up, especially at the secondary. Our challenge continues to be specialized and related services. As of the writing, running of this report is 25.5. That is, that's a number that's been typical the last couple of years. And we, as I dug a little deeper into that one, I mean, we're social work, LD openings, licensed school nurses, intensive area teachers. So that that will be a continued challenge. And again, I know our hiring managers, our directors and coordinators are still interviewing people and working very hard to fill these positions. But I was talking to Rob when I, before the, Rob Cuthbert in our office, and even today I noticed the staffing sheet when I, when he was leaving. And I just said, it looks like people have been entering. He said, yeah, you would have estimated 10, 10 positions added today alone. So we we never stop. We'll just keep on working to hire great people.
All right, we thought you might be interested in where we're at with communicating our cell phone procedures. Before I go into that, I will say we hosted a roundtable on Thursday last week in this room. Chair Nathan was part of that group. We had a number of teachers, administrators, a couple of parents. We had a student in the room. And we had a really good, hearty 90-minute discussion about implementing the procedures and being standard on how we implement those and how important that is. And I was really pleased to hear teachers really behind this change and excited for it. Some some of the folks that were in the room have been through the pilot and were able to share some really good information. And really Senator Mann was looking to see whether we felt it would be helpful to have a statewide policy or legislation around no cell phones. And that was an interesting conversation with fairly similar opinions on that. And I think overall, the group agreed that if the state could do something to help, it would be to educate our parents on how addictive and concerning cell phones can be if they're not monitored at home too. So our communication so far, we had an email right after you approved the procedures that night, and maybe even within a few minutes, an email went out to the staff and to parents and caregivers about the procedures. We emailed the high school students, although they'll tell you they don't really read the email. They did send it. They do know about it, apparently. Somehow they've heard. And we've been doing social media posts about the change. We've also gotten some press across the state about these changes. At the school level, well, obviously, the changes in the handbook that also went into effect a few minutes after you approved the procedures at our last meeting. Those handbooks, remember, are part of orientation with students, so that we'll pay particular attention to that change. We want to make sure all students understand the expectations. We'll be talking about those changes in advisory and homeroom. I was particularly excited, last week during Leadership, we had a chance to meet with the secondary principals and assistant principals on implementation. We wanted to be sure we didn't just kind of have this, and we think we know what we're doing. We wanted to be very clear, we all know what we're doing, and we're being, we're being systematic in our approach. And I will tell you, the high school principals all had already communicated with their student groups. And the the students were already preparing how they would teach their peers about the changes. There's some video work going on. There's some PBIS lessons being produced and some newsletter items. So I don't think it's going to be a problem that people won't know about the changes. We'll just need to make sure that we're monitoring and supporting as those changes go into place. You are aware of the bell time study, bell time changes. We thought we would just put that in the slide as well, and that has also been well-publicized. And then finally, we so appreciate the opportunity the board has provided our, all of our schools for a chance to orient our students to really spend some time at elementary with our kids and step into learning. This is, we've, that's been in place a number of years now and has been very successful. We'll continue on with Meet Me in the Middle, where sixth graders attend the first day with some of their seventh and eighth-grade peers and all of the staff helping to introduce middle school to the sixth graders. And then high school, same thing with the ninth grade orientation. Those are very, very fun days to watch the kids get acclimated and to see all the staff joining in, whether they work with sixth or ninth grade or not. They're part of making sure kids feel comfortable and welcome. So that is our presentation tonight.
Board members, any questions, comments, enthusiasms?
I was going to make a joke about bell times, but no.
I do have a question on the last slide. If, and we're, you know, talking about referendum to some degree tonight, are things like having these welcome days, particularly the step into learning, is that resource-heavy, that that would be something we'd have to look at cutting next year if the referendum doesn't pass? Or is that just kind of a standard, different, just different way to spread those resources around?
It's a great thing to think about. There's not an immediate resource savings from cutting that. Though if other reductions reduced learning time, we would need to think about the fact that most kids are not in school. All kids, except when you're there with your teacher. So it might be a secondary reduction, that if we needed to make other cuts that reduced instructional minutes, we might have to look at that as well. There's not a separate cost for those days, but that could be a domino that might might need to fall. Thank you.
Director McLaughlin?
And in speaking with one of my daughters, who is a parent of both a middle schooler and, well, two middle schoolers and one elementary, she was thankful to hear about the cell phone procedure and thought it was going to be of great value, wanted to pass that on. A little less, though, enthused about realizing that she'd have to have her daughter out there at 7:15 for the school pickup. But you guys have done a great job communicating everything in advance, and everything should go off without a hitch. Is it possible, if we wanted to observe the welcoming students and family events, could we, would it be okay with you to observe that?
Absolutely. I know that schools would welcome you coming in. I've spent time, my great memory of ninth grade orientation was being at Mayo High School last year, and a few kids that probably I would have looked like in high school too kind of hanging back and not sure they wanted to participate. But we, I just kind of hung in there with them and participated with the kids that were reluctant. And I know that 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 is appreciated if it's just a, an opportunity to connect with kids and see what's happening and thank the staff. There's a lot of energy that goes into it, and and it's kind of fun to see teachers that are normally very reserved, you know, doing the welcome cheer for the kids and leading some really fun, crazy activities that gets everybody ready for the year. So I know they'd welcome you to see that.
And I think if we do want to be there, board members, remember that those bell times that are listed are the times that they move into the building. So if we want to be there, we're probably going to need to be there 20 or 30 minutes earlier to see those welcome cheers and some of those other activities. So Director McLaughlin?
I I was getting really confused trying to reconcile the calendars between slides two and six, or two and eight. And I think slide two should read Wednesday, August 21st. Thursday, August 22nd. Because I was trying to think, are they doing this during their workday? How does this work? Is it on the weekend? So.
I'll be honest and say I used last year's calendar.
Updated.
Updated. And Kathy, you should have cut that.
Yeah, too.
I wanted, I wanted to mention too, on the bus, thank you for saying that. So those all should have been received in the mail. I got mine on Saturday. And new this year, we did put the estimated drop-off time. We've never really wanted to commit to that, because it can flex just a couple minutes, depending on the traffic and stuff. But we wanted to really alert parents that you're going to have different pickup times and different drop-off times this year.
And is the bus app still available?
Yes, the First View app will be working.
And how would parents access that if they don't have it?
Yes, they can go to the App Store of their phone and look for First View, is what it's called.
And then they can track their students.
Yes, you have to do a little setup. But if you had set it up last year, it's going to carry forward, and you can, you might, you have to pair it up with your sheet and look up your bus number, because your bus number might have changed.
Great. Well, we'll be looking forward to seeing everybody back in the buildings next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, 8.1, is an action item, superintendent's goals for 2024-25. I will read the resolution and ask for a motion and second, and we can follow with information and discussion. Be it resolved that the RPS School Board sets the following two goals for the work of the superintendent during the 2024-2025 school year, both of which will be utilized to evaluate the superintendent's performance at the conclusion of the school year. Leadership component, school board members rate the superintendent as effective or highly effective on at least 75% of the elements of the goals and standards-based superintendent evaluation framework developed by the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. And outcomes component, at least one-third of the schools in RPS makes statistically significant gains in the aggregate achievement in reading of all students in at least one grade level on the 2025 Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments when compared to the scores achieved on the 2024 Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I just maybe a more process question. It seems to me, and maybe I just have this wrong, that when we did this assessment recently, the superintendent did his own rating, or did we do that? Is that a, is that a change?
The superintendent did the self-assessment, and then we discussed his evaluation and made our own determination internally of how we would rate him.
Will that be the same then, or are we doing it as the primary step?
I I think we'll talk about it when we get to that point of how we'll use the tool.
Got it.
Whether we'll fill it out individually or or have the discussion jointly. That's sort of how we've done it every year.
Got it.
Thanks for the question, though. Any other? All right, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item 9.1, other business, board questions and responses. There were no questions submitted by board members before the meeting. The updated ABCD is available in Agenda Item 9.2 for future reference of agenda items. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future agenda? Hearing none, our upcoming board meeting dates are September 10th at 5:30, a regular meeting; September 17th at 5:30, a study session; September 24th at 5:30, a regular meeting; and October 8th, 24, at 5:30 PM, a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:52 PM.